Good evening and welcome to the July 14th regular Portland City Council meeting. If you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, the Lord's Prayer, a moment of silence for our men and women serving overseas and our first responders serving their community.
(Inaudible) 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 When the clerk is ready, would you please call the roll?
Mike Snyder?
Present.
Gabe Beal?
Present.
Lisa Sardi?
Present.
Beth Gilman?
Present.
Jerry Trowley?
Present.
Nicole Difridas?
Present.
Margaret Phillips?
Present.
Thank you. Council in front of you, you have the minutes from the May 26th, June 9th, and June 23rd regular council meetings. Are there any adjustments to those? Seeing none, I will take a motion to accept the minutes as presented. Thank you, Ms. Forbes. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Trowley. All in favor of accepting the minutes?
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Thank you for accepting the minutes. The Chair notes that certification has been received with all rules and notifications of compliance with this meeting. There are no guest presentations this evening. Public comment? Ma'am?
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Thank you. I have a few remarks. In a perfect world, I would be speaking to you across a negotiating table not from a visitor to the hearing. The city administration, unilaterally in a negotiation, signed an agreement that was not finished. Now, they've given that agreement to you, the council, leaving you and the Conservancy in a similarly awkward position. For the Conservancy, we have the choice of fighting for what we consider a good agreement, and being accused of denying the future force of the lighthouse, or agreeing to a bad one, possibly along with future administrations arbitrarily taken away. For you, the council, there is an equally enviable, unenviable choice of quickly adopting a bad agreement as an ordinance, or rejecting it and placing accusations of delaying the lighthouse placement. Those are the choices given us by city administrators, straters, who stated, have stated publicly that this agreement cannot be changed, but you can prove them wrong. Prove to them that you have another choice by making some common sense improvements to this agreement. First demonstrate to the people of this city that you value this lighthouse by ensuring within its pages a solid commitment to cherish and preserve it. This language is contained in three simple paragraphs, a preamble, if you will, to the agreement. Those words in no way tie the hands of future leaders, but we know doubt in the minds of those future leaders of the city mean for this lighthouse, this great city landmark to be permanent. Now, in the current draft of the agreement that you will see out of Parks and Rec, they have added part of this preamble language, but left some of it out. We would urge you to relook at that and add all of the preamble language with its intent intact. Second, Paragraph 15, the termination without cause provision, and you will see, I believe, a recommendation, a very thoughtful recommendation from Parks and Rec, that has some mental language to that that we will, that we will read back. You know, this termination without cause, it's a thoughtful covenant to have in contrast with perishable business entities, but it is no place in an agreement governing permanent historical structure or land the city is leasing from the state for that purpose. It sends the wrong message to future leaders, and it sends the wrong message to citizens of Port Clinton. But if you find you must retain it, I issue to add common sense safeguards that Mr. Cobbler will be talking about. And again, there's been some change just made to that that I hope you will find suits, gives you the feeling of the city. Thank you. No agreement, regardless of the number of safeguards, opt outs, or remedy clauses, will save the lighthouse unless there is commitment by everyone to preserve it. That commitment must come from the Conservancy, from the city, and must also from the people. The Conservancy will do its part by maintaining the lighthouse, by building an active support organization, by aggressively fundraising, and by community outreach. We will take busloads of schoolchildren to the top of the lighthouse, and some of those kids will be the board members, donors, and avid supporters of the future as well their children. We will maintain a war chest of reserve funds which the city is welcome to review to ensure the money necessary for maintenance is there. The actual maintenance costs will be low. The real cost will be borne by us all, and our dedication and commitment to the lighthouse and to the city symbolizes an trust to each other. We want to do our part, case that behind us, but giving this agreement worthy of the commitment of these dedicated volunteers. And, you know, one of the things in the Parks and Rec discussion and comments that we've continually heard, you know, you folks don't know us from Adam. You see a group out here, we, sometimes we've been a little obstinate and perhaps pushy, wanting to get this lighthouse on the waterfront. What I can tell you is that there are no guarantees in IVE. There's no guarantees really of anything. We can tell you that the lighthouse is going to be out there 50 years from now, 100 years from now, I'll be gone by then. But what I can tell you is that based on the dedication of this group, the money we have raised, the efforts we have put into it, we hope that that itself will be enough to convince you that we mean what we say, that this lighthouse is going to be around for the long haul. I ask you to show courage and not be so concerned about what could happen with the city someday, but show some real courage and trust that this thing is going to be there and always be there. It's going to be a wonderful thing for the city, and I think...
(Inaudible)
Thank you, Members of Council. As Mr. Norgard just alluded to, the meeting of the Parks and Rec Committee that took place just before this council meeting resulted in what I view as a good compromise on both sides. People have been clamoring for this, as I understand it, for some time. They don't understand why the Conservancy wouldn't sign an agreement that had a right for the city to terminate that agreement without cause, just because the city decided they could terminate it and they could. And they didn't understand why the city needed that protection, because this is land that belongs to the state of Ohio, not the city. And the submerged land lease that the city obtained through the efforts of the Conservancy for the submerged land specifically said that the lesssee, the city, shall use and occupy the leased property for a governmental, non-income-producing facility, perenn, filled lands supporting a municipal public park, perenn, period. So, the choice has been, we're either going to have a lighthouse, there's a historic landmark for the city of Port Clinton, on that site, or we're having nothing, because that's what the city's lease with the state is. It's either the lighthouse, or there's nothing. And everybody on this council has said, we support having the lighthouse out there, we really want it out there, but if you approve of the amendment and incorporate it into the proposed agreement, because it's not been agreed to yet in writing by anyone, but if you support the recommendation of Parks and Rec Committee to add the words, after this agreement has been in effect for 10 years, before Paragraph 15, which is the right to terminate the agreement without cause, I believe that would be acceptable to the Conservancy. It would show that the actions of this council meet your words where you say, we want the lighthouse out there. You will then be giving the Conservancy what it needs, and feel confident in expending the time and effort and money to put this lighthouse on the shoreline. And I hope that all of you will do just that. You will buy your actions, bring that lighthouse out there, to complete the word that you have expressed publicly and privately, that we want that lighthouse out there. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, I'm sorry. One question, please.
From what I've heard from the committee, and we'll discuss it shortly, and from Mr. Norgard and Mr. Cobbler, is that the Conservancy finds agreeable the compromise that was made in the previous meeting here, and you're comfortable with that, is that right?
We're...
That it's an acceptable compromise, right?
That's my, that's my understanding. I mean, we obviously would like to have a 50-year lease with no right to terminate without cause, but we'll accept the compromise along those lines.
The proposed compromise, the 10-year amendment, that was your proposal?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
(Inaudible)
Mayor's report? Honors' report?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one quick thing. In front of your chairs and in the council chambers, I have places of general purchase, external financial statements for the year, and some documents from the state office. These are documents that show the financial information for the city of the previous year that were actually compiled, put together by the State Honors' Office.
Treacher's report?
Mr. President, I would like to report that fed taxes have started coming in thanks to summertime. We now have $45,641, and there's still, this month is not in yet. However, there are many condos, rented by private people to other people, and we feel that not all of them are remitting 3% fed tax to Port Clinton. If you know of someone who is renting their condo, would you please tell them or tell me that they should be paying 3% to us, and if you let me know, I'll be glad to send them the necessary forms.
On record?
Yes.
Chief of Service, Director?
Thank you. Just a couple of things I announced at Parks and Rec, that they're working on the West End Park, working on basketball hoops, benches, the grills are going in, so that's coming together. We're going to try to have it off toward by the weekend, weather permitting, if you do that way. One problem I want to bring up and ask for some of you guys' help, the restrooms at Lakeview Park have been getting vandalized regularly. Swastik is put on there the other day, we had to try to grind that out, painted on the floors, painted on the walls. I have people who think it's cute to throw feces on the wall and smear it on the wall for our guys to have to clean up. It's getting very disturbing. I would ask, if you people are there driving by at night, and you see people in the park, please call the police department. They'll get over there and stop this. It's getting very frustrating for me, and very frustrating for our crew to have to clean that kind of stuff up. So I'm just asking for a little bit of help if I could. Thank you.
Police Chief's report?
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Fire Chief?
I was told I had to say something, so thank you, Mr. President. We had a new potential member to our fire department was born last Tuesday, Lucas Neil Gutman was born. And for those of you that follow what's going on in our little world, Lucas was born with the left side of his heart not functioning. He had his first series of surgeries today. He is doing very well. The surgeries were very successful. So, what we do is, most of you guys know, firemen don't ask for help, we just handle it ourselves. Well, we decided, we have started a thing called the Fire Light Foundation, so our firemen, our police officers, and those type of people don't have to go through this alone. So we're doing a fundraiser on August 29th. We're going to hold a 5K fun run, which is a walk and a run. For us old guys, we will walk it. For the younger guys, shorty, you might be able to run it. But we're going to hold it at Waterworks Park. It is a nighttime run. There will be glow things, spark leaves, and a whole nine yards, but all of the money that goes, or comes out of this will be going to the Gutman family in order to pay for their expenses for travel. Baby is in University of Michigan. Ryan is on my department. His wife works for the Ottawa County Sheriff's Department. She is staying there. Brian is going to drive back and forth to Bowling Green from University of Michigan to BG every day, so he can stay with his family. So, this money's just going to help offset the gas and hotel and things like that. We are in process right now of setting up a 501(c)(3) that this will become a perpetual fund, to where we'll have this run, or we'll have our other benefits and those type of things, and someone else in the community that runs into a similar situation will be able to step in and help them out also. So, put it on the calendars, August 29th. If you see a fireman, get a flyer, get a sponsorship. We got the greatest sponsors in the world here in town. I think we got 10 runners. They say that there's 400 runners coming. I'll believe it when I see it, but we've got some great sponsors. We're in the black right now, but we're all going to have a great time with this, so please come out and see us. We also have the Chicken Barbecue, August 8th, for the Port Clinton Firefighters Association. That's the annual fundraiser. We cook the chickens, and you guys come down and get to see what your fire department's all about. Katava had one last weekend. Jordan's the corn man, so he's not going to make our corn, but come on out, enjoy that. See any fireman for a ticket. Tickets are eight bucks, I believe, for a meal, and we free sell all the tickets. So if you don't have a ticket, you don't eat. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I believe that Chicken Barbecue is on Sunday the night...
You're right, it was the 8th last year, wasn't it?
Yes.
It's the first Sunday in August after church.
11 to 2, serving at the station.
Sorry.
Second Sunday. Second Sunday.
It's on a sun.
(Laughter) Why do you still barbecue show up?
Chicken and reed.
There are no, there is no correspondence this evening. Moving on to ordinances and resolutions, there are no third readings of ordinances and resolutions. Second readings, would the clerk please read by title and summary only, Ordinance 12-15?
Ordinance 12-15, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Safety and Service to enter into a right-of-entry and license agreement with the Port Clinton Lighthouse Conservancy, subject to approval of the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, and declaring an emergency.
Would council like to take any action this evening on Ordinance 12-15? Mrs. Sardi?
We had our Parks and Rec meeting before and discussed the right-of-entry and license agreement, and at that time, a motion was made to amend Number 15 to include that after initial 10-year, a 10-year agreement, and then to proceed on with the city may term in this agreement. And then also include in a portion of it, if there's any breach of this contract, there will be a breach of the contract if the funds no longer are available by the Conservancy.
So I have a motion on the floor, making those required adjustments?
Yes.
Do you have that in writing for Leah?
Yes.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor, making those adjustments that we've talked about on Ordinance 15-12. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Difridas?
Yes.
Would the clerk, clerk, please call the roll? I'm sorry, forgive me, I'm sorry. Any discussion on the...
Just that it was discussed at the meeting, as I said, and it was an agreement, a breached agreement.
No, ma'am, when you're ready.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Nicole Difridas?
Yes.
Gabe Beal?
Yes.
Jerry Trowley?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 12-15 has been amended. Would council like to take any additional action on Ordinance 12-15 as amended?
Make a motion that we waive the three required readings.
I have a motion to waive the three required readings on Ordinance 12-15 as amended. Do I have a second?
I will.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Any discussion on waiving the three required readings on Ordinance 12-15 as amended?
Yes. As I said before, at the Parks and Rec meeting, this was discussed, and through compromise and discussing it, we all came to an agreement, and it's necessary to expedite keeping the lighthouse getting out there.
Any other comment? Hearing that, would the clerk please call the roll on waiving the three required readings on Ordinance 12-15 as amended?
Gabe Beal?
Yes.
Jerry Trowley?
Yes.
Nicole Difridas?
Yes.
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Thank you. The three required readings have been waived. Would anyone like to take any additional action on Ordinance 12-15 as amended? Mrs. Sardi?
Make a motion to retain the emergency clause.
I have a motion to retain the emergency clause on 12-15 as amended. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Trowley. Did you move your hand, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion on retaining the emergency clause? Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Gabe Beal?
Yes.
Nicole Difridas?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Jerry Trowley?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Jerry Trowley?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 12-15 has been amended. Would council like to take any additional action on Ordinance 12-15 as amended?
Make a motion that we waive the three required readings.
I have a motion to waive the three required readings on Ordinance 12-15 as amended. Do I have a second?
I will.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Any discussion on waiving the three required readings on Ordinance 12-15 as amended?
Yes. As I said before, at the Parks and Rec meeting, this was discussed, and through compromise and discussing it, we all came to an agreement, and it's necessary to expedite keeping the lighthouse getting out there.
Any other comment? Hearing that, would the clerk please call the roll on waiving the three required readings on Ordinance 12-15 as amended?
Gabe Beal?
Yes.
Jerry Trowley?
Yes.
Nicole Difridas?
Yes.
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Thank you. The three required readings have been waived. Would anyone like to take any additional action on Ordinance 12-15 as amended? Mrs. Sardi?
Make a motion to retain the emergency clause.
I have a motion to retain the emergency clause on 12-15 as amended. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Trowley. Did you move your hand, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion on retaining the emergency clause? Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Gabe Beal?
Yes.
Nicole Difridas?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Jerry Trowley?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Jerry Trowley?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other action on 12-15 as amended?
Make a motion that we adopt, or 12-15 as amended.
We have a motion to adopt 12-15 as amended. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Difridas. Seeing none? Any public, final public comment as we're waiving the three required readings? Seeing none? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Jerry Trowley?
Yes.
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Gabe Beal?
Yes.
Nicole Difridas?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 12-15 as amended, has passed? I think I deserve a round of applause. (Applause) What was that drinks on the lighthouse? (Laughter) I had somebody over there, Mon, mobile. Moving on to new ordinances and resolutions. Would the clerk please read, please read by title and summary only, Ordinance 13-15?
Ordinance 13-15, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Safety and Service to enter into a contract with the Woodbridge Landing LLC for the purchase of real property and declaring an emergency.
Would council like to take any action this evening on 13-15? Seeing none, that will be moved to the July 28th regular city council meeting. Would the clerk please read by title and summary only, Ordinance 14-15?
Ordinance 14-15, an ordinance amending Section 911.03 of the codified ordinances of the city and declaring an emergency.
Would council like to take any action on Ordinance 14-15 this evening?
That's a jab, that was, right?
Yes, sir. Seeing no action? Oh, sorry?
Yeah, I, hang on a second. I make a motion that we, that we waive the three required readings.
I have a motion on the floor to waive the three required readings?
For 14-15.
On Ordinance 14-15. Do I have a second?
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Beal. Any discussion on waiving the three required readings? Mrs. Sardi?
Oh, no, thanks.
Oh, sorry. Don't move, you're going to get called out. Seeing that, would the clerk please call the roll on waiving the three required readings?
Nicole Difridas?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Jerry Trowley?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Gabe Beal?
Yes.
Thank you. The three required readings have been waived. Any additional action from council?
Yeah, sorry. I make a motion that we...
We need to retain the emergency clause?
Yes. Retain the emergency clause of Ordinance 14-15. Yes, sorry, I make a motion that we, we need to retain the emergency clause? Yeah, retain the emergency clause, ordinance 14-15.
I have a motion to retain the emergency clause on 14-15. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Sardi. Any discussion on retaining the emergency clause? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Nicole Difridas?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Kate Bealow?
Yes.
Thank you, would council like to take any additional action on ordinance 14-15? Mrs. DeFrais?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we pass ordinance 14-15.
I have a motion on the floor to adopt ordinance 14-15. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Sardi. Any discussion on the motion to adopt?
Yeah, we discussed this in the infrastructure committee and we recommended for full passage and I believe it was also discussed in finance and would you explain it, please?
Sure, and forgive me, earlier before the meeting, I announced that no other ordinances would be waived and that's my apology, I'm new to this job, forgive me. Finance Committee and Infrastructure have been looking for some time at the sewer tap-in rates that are charged within the city of Port Clinton and within our sewer district. We've made some pretty substantial adjustments in hope of accomplishing multiple goals, getting more users and that residual income from the sewer fees, improving the opportunities for development within our community and revitalization in downtown and when you're dealing with Lake Shore Drive as well, environmental issues, trying to get those situated. The county is in the process of finalizing their plans down Lake Shore Drive. This will entice, serve as an enticement to get those homeowners, business owners along Lake Shore Drive to start sending us that residual income with their sewer, monthly sewer bills. And again, Finance Committee did make a full recommendation that this be adopted at the council, in front of council. Any public comment on this issue?
A question?
Yes.
Are you lowering the rate?
Very much so.
Rate, you're low lowering it.
Lowering the tap-in rates, the tap-in. If you have a new structure or building or need to expand, what it costs you to tap into that sewer, to try to encourage more people to tap in, to help spread the cost for more people.
I mean, all councilmen can't consider it.
Did you read? Your question was adopted, council, have a chance to read this? Yes.
Yes, with the expected number of customers because of this reduction out west, or yeah, out west, what is the difference between what the city would get from the current rate as opposed to the new reduced rate?
By present time, the city's getting zero from the current rate. There's nothing to force the property owners to tap in. We're hoping that this will be enough of an incentive to get them to tap in, so anything is better than nothing. I believe in the past five years, we've averaged one?
Typically, one per year.
One tap-in per year, so anytime we can get additional users to share the cost, we have the fixed costs that are being shared by the community to operate our sewage treatment system. It has the capacity, as long as we can keep that growing instead of shrinking as it has the past couple of years. Hopefully, it's a pipe dream of mine, but hopefully, we can look at not increasing sewer rates in the future if we're able to share that.
If there's nothing mandating their tap-in, what makes you think that they will tap in with the new rate?
Well, again, you have to keep in mind, this is more than just Lake Shore Drive. We have activity going on in Second Street this year, activity going on in Madison Street, we have opportunities coming down the road for development, there's a whole bunch more of opportunities for people to invest in Port Clinton if we give them a fighting chance with their startup costs.
But the people in the city would probably have to tap in anyway, right? Regardless of the reduction or not.
But if they don't come in, they're not gonna tap in. This is hopefully an incentive to get that brewery to open up, to get that new hotel to open up, to get that other restaurant to open up, in a property that's currently vacant or is a property that needs new rehab.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no other, and I don't believe I see any others, if I do, just taller. Would the clerk please call the roll? Again, we're voting on the adoption of 1514, or 1415.
Nicole Difridas?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Kate Bealow?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Thank you, ordinance 14-15 has passed. Moving on to business from the floor, Mr. Bealow.
Thank you, Mr. President. At the last planning and development committee meeting, Mr. Difridas brought to us information related to downtown parking requirements that currently exist in the codified ordinances and made some recommendations to reduce or modify those in the downtown business area. Again, as an incentive to promote development or investment downtown. Anytime there's a repurposing or a new construction of a building, there are a certain number of parking spots based on what we believe at this point to be antiquated formula or recommendations by a professional organization. This would, we're exploring eliminating those and letting business owner determine their own parking situation as they seem fit, so that's something we're gonna look at further and I think ideas will form in that. This is the initial stage, we had the first discussion at the last meeting. Also, we spoke about an item that Mr. Snyder brought to our attention about Washington Properties' interest in Waterworks Park. At the conclusion of the discussion, Mr. Snyder made a motion seconded by Mr. Difridas and the following motion passed, directing the law director to draft all necessary documents required for council to review the purpose of placing on the November 3, 2015 general election ballot, the question to voters of the city of Port Clinton to allow the safety service director for the city of Port Clinton, Ohio, to enter into negotiations with Harbor Front LLC or their designee for the purpose of leasing an area of waterfront property within the city of Port Clinton not to exceed 84,000 square feet in size. Other considerations for this question are that the remaining 525,000 plus or minus square feet of said waterfront land within the city of Port Clinton be maintained as public spaces, including 100% of the land immediately adjacent to the lakefront and riverfront. Furthermore, minimum, the following public amenities shall be included in said negotiations for all to enjoy boardwalk, transient dockage, amphitheater, playground, beach, and walking trails.
Period. I have a motion on the floor directing the law director to draft language. Do I have a second? Mr. Trolley? Any discussion? I actually, I wasn't expecting to sit here, I do have something to say on the matter. If I could ask for the assistance of Mr. Hadfield, excuse myself from the table, it's that little PowerPoint that I'd like to show. Yeah, that's right, we're trying to get it to work. Yeah, that's why, we're trying to get it to work. Yeah.
Oh, I think you gotta turn the laptop on. I've used it once before. That's, that's the still.
Yeah. I'm sure. You have another minute here to think that's more. You have another minute here to think that's more. Yeah. So, Mr. Sardi, this is getting to those standards that we don't want to deliver now.
But if he's just drafting up the paperwork now, if he's as, as his, among, then after credit.
Again, the only question is, do you want to allow a lease to take place, not be a lease itself?
No, I understand that.
It's just a yes or no, do you want to move forward or you don't?
Again, I'm gonna say it's a really short notice thing.
That's what the issue six requested, yes or no. We're offering that in due time. Well, rather than waste any more time, we'll just, if Cole can get it going, we'll jump in. But council members, I wanna tell you a little story about some friends of mine, Henry and Liza. Henry had a bucket, but unfortunately, that bucket had a hole in it. And Henry turned to his wife, Liza, and said, "Liza, I've got a hole in my bucket, what should I do?" And Liza said, "Well, find a stick and put a stick in that hole." So Henry went out and found a stick and said, "But, Liza, my stick is too big, how am I gonna fix the hole?" And she said, "Well, go get your hatchet and whittle down that stick and that'll fit in the hole." And then Henry said, "Well, I wouldn't use my hatchet, but my hatchet's too dull. What am I gonna do?" He said, "Well, use your sharpening stone and sharpen that hatchet, you know, then you can chop the stick and fix the hole." And he said, "But, my sharpening stone is too dry." And she said, "Well, use your bucket and go get water and wet it." He goes, "There's a hole in my bucket." So you see, it kinda goes around in circles and it continues. And that's kind of where we stand right now with the discussions of the 14 acres of commercially zoned land and Washington properties. I was invited to a meeting about two, three weeks ago, Mr. Leone, Mike Rose, Craig Tripp, Yanni Raffa, this out in Manas Valley, and I was very, very surprised to learn that Mr. Rose is still very much interested in investing a substantial amount of money in the 14 acres of commercially zoned land as well as with multiple buildings in downtown Port Clinton, but he's got a hole in his bucket right now. We all want more information, but he doesn't want to invest the time, energy, effort, and capital to provide that information that we want. So we're constantly trying to sharpen our ax and get that sharpening stick and all that fun stuff. So, you know, where do we go from here? That's the question today, how do we do that? How do we fix that bucket? Now, I'm pretty fortunate that my best friend, Mike Lemon, is also a huge Ohio State fan and he loves to follow the bucket as just about as much as I do, and he's a farmer. And as we're driving across the Midwest and all the way up to Arizona to watch football games, we pass a lot of corn and a lot of soybeans, a lot of farmland, and he tries to teach him as much as he can about farms. I'm no expert by any means, but one of the things I've learned is that an acre of land has 43,560 square feet, 43560, which is another oddity that I keep in this mullion, is also the zip code for Zilane, Ohio. So, to kind of, to kind of put that in perspective, and you would see this on the beautiful PowerPoint presentation, a football field, we all know the size of a football field. It's 53 yards wide by 120 yards from back of the end zone to the back of the end zone. And that works out to 159 feet by 360 feet, or 57,240 square feet. So a football field is just about an acre and a third in size. And if this PowerPoint presentation were up there, you could see the football field and the little blue line, and trust me, it killed me to put a blue line on a football field. But an acre takes up from an end zone to the other nine yard line at both sides. So, you know, we're building a new stadium in town, if you get down there, you can see everybody has an idea what an acre of land equates to, okay? Now, Waterworks Park with the 14 acres of commercially zoned land that we're talking about here is 14 acres. So if you take 14 times 840 square feet, 609,840 square feet. Now, what Mr. Rose is proposing is a lease of no more than 84,000 square feet of land, 84,000, which would leave then approximately, as mentioned in the ordinance, approximately 525,840 plus or minus square feet as public access, with the boardwalk, transient dockage, amphitheater, playground, walking trails, and beach at minimum, as well as maintaining 100% of the waterline, lakefront and riverfront, for complete public access. Now, as we look at what's already down at Waterworks Park, and these calculations were done by myself and my father, former county auditor, we estimated and we did a little, you know, draw the diamond triangles and squares and tried to get as much as we could. The current high ground where the gravel is and paved parking lot that currently sits at Waterworks Park, the stuff that'll be developed for years, is somewhere between 170,000 and 180,000 square feet, 170,000 and 180,000 square feet. My calculation was 173, my dad's calculation was 184, so we kind of adjusted accordingly. So using that low range, what Mr. Rose is proposing is leasing less than 50% of what's already developed out there in parking lot and gravel, while maintaining all the rest with all of the new amenities maintained at a much higher level than can be found. And all that we're asking tonight in this piece of legislation is the question, and Mr. Wilber will work on the specific language, but should the safety service director be allowed to negotiate a plan to lease no more than 84,000 square feet of commercially zoned land within the city limits of Port Clinton? Yes or no, should the safety service director be allowed to do that? And that's what I'm urging you guys to say yes, so we can get this on the ballot. Now, it's certainly not the first step, because I'm urging you to say yes tonight, and if that happens, we would ask that Mr. Wilber have this language for us to review, we'd have to take some pretty substantial, or pretty rapid, action here. The election is November 3, everything has to be confirmed by this body at least 90 days in advance, so we're talking about the first part of August, so we're looking at moving pretty rapidly here. If it gets on the ballot, the voters of Port Clinton will decide that question, yes, do we like the safety service director to negotiate, no, we do not want the safety service director to negotiate. If the yes vote is successful, safety service director and his team will sit down with Mr. Rose and his team, come to some type of agreement. If no is proposed, then we all go home and call it another day. But once an agreement is arranged and met, that final agreement, that final lease comes back to city council for a final thumbs up, thumbs down. And at that point, if it's thumbs up, we move forward, if it's thumbs down, we move forward in another direction. So what I'm asking you tonight, with this motion from the floor and the discussion that we had in the meetings and conversations I've had with Mr. Rose, would you help me at least take the first step to try to fix the bucket and stop this round and round and roundabout move? So with that, I think. Any other discussion on the motion currently in front of us?
Mr. President? Let's reiterate some of the themes you hit on, which is that my understanding and what we discussed, what's in the motion, is that anything we act on tonight would eventually go on the ballot, which was the theme of issue six, and we just described as basically two checkpoints for public ballot voting. Be this number written later, should an agreement be?
Correct.
Agreed upon by city council, then we go back for issue six on another general action ballot, so there's two checkpoints.
Correct.
That you described.
Correct. Seeing no other, would the clerk please call the roll?
Do I have a second to that motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, because we started the discussion. Who seconded that?
I think, I believe, Mr. Trolley did.
Yes, sir. One more.
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Kate Bealow?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Nicole Difridas?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion has passed. Anything else to comment this evening?
Nothing else.
You sure?
Thank you.
Mrs. Sardi.
Nothing, sir.
Mrs. Gilman?
Nothing.
Mr. Trolley?
Yes, just to make mention, emergency services meeting is next Tuesday, the 21st, 5:30 here at City Hall.
Thank you. Mrs. DeFrais?
Yeah.
Ms. Phillips?
The laws, rules, and ordinance committee is working with Mr. Wilber on coming up with an ordinance so that renovation can be done in the downtown area, that there is some continuity in many things, including color ballot, so that senators don't want to commit to something that's totally out or off the wall from what are proposed out there.
And I just have two really rapid things here. The Finance Committee will have a special meeting this Friday, the 17th, at 11:00 a.m. right here in this chamber, from 11 to noon. As we did last year, we had a public meeting that lasted for eight hours, we've narrowed it down to two hours, or one hour, excuse me. Anyone would like to come in and talk about the general fund and budget requirements and suggestions for the general fund as we look for 2016? The second meeting announcement next Tuesday, there will be a Finance Committee meeting at 6:30 following the Parks and Recreation Committee meeting. For the sake of time, I have five pages of thank yous for the 4th of July, I want to thank everyone in the community for supporting that event, I'll read these at the next meeting. We are planning already for 2015, it's 2016, so it's a good day all around. Having no other business, I will take a motion from the adjournment.
I make this out of this body adjournment.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. We are adjourned.